Mr. Weeby also provided a pretty hefty document from which he's developed his presentation. I think Dylan will really appreciate the presentation, but you want to hold on to this? It's really good stuff. Did a nice job on it. Thank you for hearing me out. One of the biggest problems we have at the high school is actually students being able to access classes other than the core classes. So this is kind of the gist of our presentation. The objective here is just to provide information about our present school structure and then the vision going forward. I know a lot of you don't have the opportunity to come down to the school and see it in action, everybody's working and so forth, but I'm hoping to paint a picture here that you'll be able to see a little bit more clearly. This vision was developed by our leadership team, our school improvement team, conversations we've had with teachers, students, parents, reviewing data and documents, and this is what we believe should be the division of the future for our high school. The goal of our school is to successfully provide comprehensive education along with a variety of exploratory courses that will guide each student toward a career pathway. Under our present law, students have limited opportunities for career exploration. Once we get the core courses in, it's very limited. Rhode Island Basic Education Plan requires every student in the state to develop an individualized learning plan. The learning plan guides the students to focus on specific career pathways. So what we're trying to do is get a student in the ninth grade with very broad general knowledge and then try to focus it down into a career pathway. North Smithville High School achieves this by using an online tool called Way2GoRI. This site is designed to guide students to narrow their focus and select courses aligned with their career choices. Now, it's a great thing that we got those Chromebooks because we do that online. The only time that we really have to do that is during our advisory period. So the desktop machines are pretty slow. The Chromebooks are awesome. This site encourages students to develop a focus by introducing the National Development Career Clusters. All clusters are broken down to 16 different areas. And I just kind of listed them up here for you. These are the basic 16 areas that the career clusters are broken down into. And then they're further broken down into pathways for each cluster that's there. So the 16 career clusters are further broken down into the pathways. The pathways are a set of courses designed to prepare each student for a career within a chosen field of interest. So I just want to kind of show you what the kids are looking at when they come across this.
How do you help the kids do a pathway? I know when I was in high school, I had no idea what I was going to do.
Yeah, we try to focus their attention right now because if you don't, they're just all over the place. So what we're trying to do is come up with a set of, you know, just kind of get a visual of where they're going and then offer the courses that will help them attain that career. This is going slow, huh?
Tim, Wemby's trying to find that slide. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The career clusters, is there a component to the guidance program when they go into the classrooms and take the kids into a computer lab and do a career exploration?
Yes, yes. That's where we use that online tool, the Way2GoRI. Guides councils actually break the kids out into sections and then they go into the career clusters. So this is just to kind of give you a visual. This is a marketing career cluster. There's 16 different ones. But if you scroll down there just a little bit, Mr. Peppin, you'll see underneath the pathways, our marketing management pathway, professional sales pathway, merchandising pathway. They're all different pathways. And if you click on one of those PDFs below.
So how do you get these classes? Online courses or do they have to travel somewhere?
Nope, it's not. These are what we are offering at the school, okay? So what I wanted to show you, they're all, if you look over in here, the ninth grade right here, you have English in ninth grade, you have math, you have science, you have social studies, okay? You see that? That ninth grade coming across here? The 10th grade, these are the same class. If you look at those, those are all pretty much the core courses that we offer at the high school right now. Those are the graduation requirements. Somebody, four years of English, four years of math, three years of science and so forth. But what makes it a little different is over here in the actual elective area, okay? So when you select some sort of a pathway, the elective areas that you choose to put in there will determine the pathway that you're going on. Some of them do have overlap. So what we try to do is we try to offer courses that have the most overlap because we're a small school, we can only offer so many of those. Okay, want to go back to leave the slideshoot? All right, so here you go. All career pathways require a set of core courses. These courses align with North Smithville High School's graduation requirements. So that's what I've said. The core ones we already offer. But what we don't offer is the specific ones, the elective courses. And I'm going to try to explain to you why that is. Again, here we are, the four credits for English, four credits for math, three credits for science, three for social studies, one fine arts, three and a half PE, half a credit for senior skills. These are what we require right now to graduate. Assuming a typical four-year experience, currently each student has seven slots to fill each year, two years, allowing the possibility of 28, okay? So here's our ninth graders, they come in, they have seven courses. 10th graders, another seven, and so on and so forth, till we have 28 courses total to fill up. Our present day rotation, just so you know how we do it here, we only offer six courses per day. So what we do is we use a rotating schedule over here. So you go one through six, and then one drops out, and we go two through seven, and it just cycles through. So there's actually seven different scenarios here. When the kids come to school, they say, "What day is it?" It's an A day, a B day, a C day. There's a lot of confusion with that until we get going. Once they're in the classroom, that's fine, but it does create some confusion. These are the mandated courses required before selecting any elective. So everything that you see here in gray, these are the mandated ones. Just kind of a visual to see what the general courses are that we have to take here. In college, we call them the general ed courses, all right? And then these are the electives here that we have right now. And it looks like we have a lot of mobility there. But if you consider that most four-year colleges actually require two years of a foreign language, what happens is two of those electives are going right off the bat, okay? 60% of our students attending the high school, they're involved in the music program. In the middle school, they pick up an instrument, they buy an instrument, they come over to us. It's a great program we have over there. Once they're in that music program, they don't want to leave the music program. Typically, they're there for four years. So if you block out another four, that takes up those. So now we've already eliminated that many electives. As you can see, students choosing this path have only three elective opportunities to pursue right now. Many competitive colleges prefer that students enter with four years of foreign language. So if you're going to a competitive college, that takes another two away. So in your whole high school career, what do you have left? You have that one elective, okay? So it's really hard to build a career pathway with one elective. For the students with the ability to select an elective, our interest is reduced to one. For students with individual education plans, it kind of works, the same limited amount of electives kind of works the same way for special ed kids. Because what happens here is they get a resource class, okay, to try to help them out. So when we do that, that takes four out of that mix right away. We give those as elective credits, okay? They still have to do the basic courses there. Students reading below grade level are often given a literacy class. So if you're reading below grade level, you get a literacy class. Again, you're limited with the amount of electives that you can take. Realizing this limitation, what we did this year is we took the special education model. Instead of giving the kid a resource class, we've actually allowed the case managers to, we gave them a caseload of like, I can't remember how many it was, 15 kids or whatever it was. And they work with the kids on a weekly basis. They change their schedule weekly and they submit it to us online. So if Billy needs a lot of help this week, they'll spend more time with Billy. If Bobby needs more help next week, they'll spend more time with him. They can pull the kid out and actually give them a resource class if it's needed, but it's not always needed. What we found is that these kids need electives, okay? Particularly those kids flourish in an elective course.
What subject are you pulling out of? What subject are you pulling the special education student out of in order to give them the resources?
It could vary. It could vary from week to week. We try to vary it so it's not always the same one. See, that was the problem before, when it was static, it had to be the same class all the time or a resource class took up the elective. So it could be a PE class this week. It could be, maybe they're working on a science project next week, they pull them out of science class and they work with them individually.
So on the old schedule where it showed the resource across the board, every student who had an IEP, who had resource, had to meet five times a week?
When they were, in a fixed schedule, they had resource set in the schedule. So let's say period two was a resource class. Every period of two, they had a resource class. But oftentimes, they didn't really need that class, but it was scheduled in there.
Right, so even if a child has an IEP that said resource two times a week, he was scheduled for five times a week?
Well, it doesn't read resource two times a week, it just says so many hours of...
Right, which is...
Yeah, yeah, because with a static schedule, we had to put them in a class to do it. So now it's much more flexible. Question becomes, given these restrictions, how can we offer students more electives? One proposal would be to increase the schedule from a seven-period rotation to an eight-period. So if you look at that, everything, the bottom line will just give them that one more course that they're able to take. A proposed eight-day schedule would be in place of our other schedule right here, okay? So that was pretty confusing, we have seven different scenarios. If you come back and you look at this one right here, you'll have two periods. It's a two-period rotation, so you'll have one through six, and then seven and eight come in, and one and two drop out and so forth, it just moves through. So there's actually just four scenarios now instead of seven scenarios. So it makes it a little bit easier to follow.
So you're doing less hours on the core subject?
Yeah, it would ultimately be less hours altogether. Because what you're doing is you're taking eight periods, especially where you had seven. The day is the same amount of time. The periods would be the same length, but ultimately by the end of the school year, you'll meet less times.
I just worry about the kids when they get to college. Especially when I was sitting there in calculus and chemistry and all those classes. And a lot of the kids, I went to private school, but the public school were struggling in those classes. You know what I mean? They almost weeded them out.
Yep.
So I worry about that, you know?
Right.
To get to college, that issue with less math and less science, just...
Believe it or not, we're way over the amount of minutes that Rhode Island requires us to take right now. So even when you put eight periods in a day, we're still pretty competitive with other schools. So if you look at like Situate High School, Narragansett High School, those types, we're competitive with the amount of minutes, even when it's eight-period day. Right now, we are ahead of them. What are the benefits of an eight-period schedule? An eight-period schedule could address some of the most pressing needs we have. You gain full accreditation from NIAS. There's some things that we can do on the other side too. Like common planning time right now for teachers. I don't have a spot for that in the schedule right now. If we had common planning, if we had an eight-period schedule, that's one thing that I could do there. We want to address the eighth and ninth grade transitioning issue. When we get kids that come up from eighth and ninth grade, it's a very high failure rate. That's the highest failure rate nationally, ninth grade. They come from a middle school where it's a team model, and then they're going into like this self-reliance mode, and it's a tough transition. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to offer a class to ninth graders, basically how to study, study skills, time management, organization, that type of thing. Get them off, get them started off to the right foot, so we know exactly what we're doing here.
Do you have any eighth graders taking ninth grade classes? For like advanced math, somebody who's really good at math, why hold them back?
Yes, because we have two sections available, one in the eighth grade. So when a student gets to the high school in ninth grade, they start with geometry.
Okay, good.
And then the math achievement, the other thing that we can look at too is that we have a lot of, a lot of our failures in the math area come from kids that don't, basically they don't do their homework, okay? So they go to their class, they put in the time when they're in the class, but once they leave the class, that's it, it's over with. So one of the concepts we talked about doing was actually if we had an eight-period day, we could give them an academic enrichment class where they could actually get their work done in school. They'll do it if they're in school, if it's after school, their day is done. So for those kids, that would help them out. And we'd also be able to provide more opportunities for kids that want more resources.
Sorry. Going back to the eighth and ninth grade transition program, can you just clarify for me, and I know you're still at the planning stages and it's nothing etched in stone, are you looking to add a course similar to the one that you were...
It would be, it would be an elective course.
Okay.
It would be an elective course, and it would basically get them off, get them started on the right foot. Teach them time management, how to organize themselves, different things to, just to get them so, to prevent them from failing, but trying to get them off to the right.
Has there been any discussion about a freshman collaborative lab of any kind? Meaning having a group of teachers that are going to teach just freshmen?
We've, yeah, we've actually tried that.
We've done something similar to that. We've had a Northman Academy where we initially started with just all of the college prep students with a core group of teachers. And then we've split that up in following years into two different teams. I don't think we've seen the deli rate drop as dramatically with those models as we would like.
But from my clarification, if you do that, does that prevent those students from being able to take the honors classes?
No.
That would still fit into the schedule?
You can still fit into the schedule. We have students who take a mixture of honors and college prep classes. Sometimes they're in advanced math and they're not...
And not every...
Or vice versa.
I didn't mean to talk over you. Not every student will need that either, you know? So if you have a high-achieving student, they can opt out of taking that. It's just something that would help a student, that would, a normal student may want to take it. If you're a high-achieving student, you may want to take another elective instead. So it wouldn't be a requirement.
That's a good question. If you're, if the students are having trouble transitioning from the middle school to high school and ninth grade grades start to count towards college, do you think that it might be a possibility to consider moving the eighth grade into the high school so that they can begin the transition in the eighth grade and are totally prepared for all the independence that is required by the ninth grade?
I think it would be a good idea to stop them in the eighth grade to learn some of the things that we do in the high school, yes. But I don't think it's a good idea for them to be at the high school just at that point. Because what would happen at the high school is if I have eighth graders, it's hard for me. Like, let's say, for example, they took an elective, take an art class or something like that. Do they get high school credit for that, or do they not get high school credit for that? And then if I gave them high school credit for that, would that eliminate them from taking it the following year? Do you know what I'm, where the confusion is?
Well, I was only asking a question because of this team concept for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, if it's causing ninth graders to fail when their grades start to begin to count for college, it seemed to make sense to me to start transitioning.
Yeah, I know, I agree. I think it's great in the eighth grade if we had something to stop them transitioning. And I agree with that. I just don't, I just don't know what we would do with them, different than what we're doing with them right now. I'm thinking, it's all conceptual right now. I'm thinking a course would be helpful for them to kind of go in the right direction. You follow me?
I do. They'd still be in the eighth grade team.
Yep, so it's all...
That gets that seven beneath the junior.
Right, right.
I don't think they have the same issues that this team concept is presenting to ninth graders today.
Right, right. I get you. Okay, so for students, skills class can be offered for transition. This is what we just talked about. Reduce the schedule change from seven to four. Struggling students will have an opportunity to complete work during the school day. Students seeking electives will have opportunities. And this is the, we just talked about, the skills class could be introduced for the, that's the same thing there. The transition issue could be improved by offering ninth-grade students a course that taught students such areas as study skills, time management, organization, planning, self-reliance, that type of thing. Reducing the schedule from seven to four days, it just makes it a little bit easier for everybody to follow. Instead of seven different scenarios, I get kids coming in at different times throughout the day, going to different places, it's just a little bit easier to follow four instead of seven. Struggling students would have an opportunity to complete work during the school day. Those are the kids that typically, once they leave school, they kind of check out. If I had an opportunity for them to actually get some of their work that's out-of-class assignments done during the school day, I think the likelihood of them completing it would be, would be much better if I provided them with some time to do that.
Well, how would you provide the time to do that? If you're, you're either giving them more electives or you're giving them a study course.
So we have more slots in the day. Some kids are going to want to take more electives. Some kids are going to want to get work done, but I have slots that I can actually do it right now.
So you're not going to schedule every student for a full schedule?
Every student will be scheduled a full schedule. Some will opt to take an academic enrichment class where they can get work done in class.
Right.
Some may take another elective.
So how is, how is, how is this going to help a student make up the work that he needs to do in school? Because I'm either in an elective of an academic major or another elective of a fun nature. But I don't have a study hall where I'm going to do the homework, right?
Fun nature?
I missed that. Well, I mean, you described it as something they had an interest in.
Yep, yep. So let's, so you have your core courses that you're going to take, right? Then you could take, you could opt to take an elective. Let's say, let's say they're interested in culinary, they could take a culinary class, for example. If they didn't want to take a culinary class, they could take the academic enrichment class where they could actually get some of their work done in school.
Oh, so it's supposed to be like a study hall?
Similar to it, similar to a guided study. Like, schools like Barrington have that right now, and they have a lot of success with it.
They'll get credit for like a study hall class?
Yeah, I don't know exactly if, I don't know exactly if we're going to count that for credit or if that's just an elective course. There's going to be 32 opportunities here. We're still going to require 25 for graduation. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So the requirement would stay the same, it would just give them an opportunity to get some of their work done. And that's not the majority of them, those are the kids that struggle.
Going back to the slide, did you have, it showed physical education slash health every day of the week. Is that a class in phys ed that sometimes does health and sometimes does phys ed? Or is it one class is...
Health is a quarter, one quarter a year? Is that what it is?
So the ninth and 12th graders have health as a pullout during PE. And the 10th and 11th graders have three-quarters of PE and a quarter of health, just to separate out. It's still just one block of time.
Right, but it takes one block every single day for the whole year?
Yes.
To accomplish that? That is, when did that happen, that they went up to having phys ed every single day all year long? Because when my son was in school, it was a half-credit course, and he had an elective opposite. So they were on a rotating schedule, six-day cycle. Day one, two, three, he had phys ed. Day four, five, six, he had creative writing.
I'd have to go back and look. I want to say it was sometime probably maybe during the block or at the end of the block that we switched that when the state requirement went out for PE minutes, I think.
But the PE minutes by the state is 100 minutes a week.
Hundred minutes a week.
That's two 50-minute classes.
Yeah.
We have been getting twice, two and a half times what they require. And I just, when I looked at that schedule and tried to figure it out, I looked at the websites of the other 29 districts in the state. And we're one of the only districts in the state that has a full-credit course in phys ed that takes up an entire block of time. The others all have two periods of phys ed. It's a two-credit, two-credit requirement for graduation, so they take a half a credit a year, meaning they have another half a credit slot left open for an elective.
Yeah, we do that with our senior skills class right now. The senior skills class meets one day and then PE the other day. They go back and forth.
I really was shocked when I saw that they had to have phys ed every single day of the week. And we are an anomaly in the state for doing that. And I kept thinking, well, that's a problem for a student selecting electives. You pigeonholed him into having to have phys ed every single day of the week for a full credit versus a half-credit course like every other school system is offering. And I, if my child were in this system now, I'll tell you quite honestly, I'd be at every school committee meeting there was, trying to get a change in that policy so that we only had a half-credit of phys ed every year. And he could opt to take creative writing or early college writing or an academic elective that's going to help him get into college. I, you know, I'm sorry, but I, as a guided class for three years, there's no, you'll never be able to convince me that a college admissions officer is going to look at a transcript where the student has one credit every year for four years in phys ed health. And I think if they were weighing transcripts, they'd be more impressed with a transcript where the student had a half a credit of phys ed health every year and a half-credit elective in an academic area for the other. So I feel like we're almost putting our kids at a disadvantage for doing that. And I don't, I really, I was taken back when I saw that. And I thought, well, that's a big problem, my kids aren't getting electives because it's a whole credit versus a half. And if they were half...
Just to answer your question, Mr. Clifford, I don't have any data that supports that statement. When we had half a credit when we were seven through 12 versus full credit now, our rates have not gone down in terms of getting kids into any particular colleges that I can think of, and our rates have been fairly stable overall. We always would like our kids to have more options, but I'm not sure that that's accurate, that they're not getting in places because of...
I didn't say that. I said I think that a college admissions officer would look more favorably on a transcript if the student had an academic elective half-credit. I mean, do you weigh physical education in the GPA and in the class rank and such?
We do not.
You know, okay. So if I had, again, that impacts your class rank. Because if I had the opportunity to have a credit elective of an advanced level, I could bolster my class rank in GPA too.
It's only relative to what everyone else is doing too. So it's relative to what other students are doing.
Right.
So if everyone performs as they perform, it wouldn't matter one way or the other.
Well, I think this, personally, I think with phys ed credit, a full credit every year for three years and then the half and the senior.
There's a lot of balls in the air, the whole proposal, you know what I mean? So right now, we're trying to bet it all out right now, you know, so...
I wonder if adjustment doesn't fix the issue though?
As I have a kid, I do have kids in schools right now. And I think that the phys ed credit is actually a very good thing for the kids. I think we can be flexible, but I believe in healthy mind, healthy body, it's very important. I think the 100 minutes is really a minimum. I think it's actually good that we may have our kids with phys ed. A lot of kids do play academics, I mean, sports. A lot of our kids don't play sports. And I've always thought again, 100 minutes is just, for some kids, that's the only athletics they get during the week. And so I think organize athletics in a gymnasium program, which is very nice. So that's my opinion.
I'm just saying that locking it in for a full credit every day of the week, if the student had an option of taking the requirement that the state requires, as other districts do, with a half-credit and an elective of a half-credit on the opposite days of that cycle, I think it would be more advantageous for the student. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
I agree with Mike. He's right.
I still admire him.
He's right. You're right.
Seriously, Joe.
You're right. No, you're right. No, if a kid wants to take a class instead of gym, I'm all for it.
I think too, the problem was, you have some students who don't like taking gym. And now, and now they're being made to take it every day of the week. And if you have an at-risk student who's, you know, on the border of dropping out, that could be the thing that puts them over the edge. You know, they can go to any other school in the state and not have to face that if they're not inclined to like gym. And there are kids who don't like to change to gym. I mean, they don't even like changing to gym. So, you know, that's a rule for them.
So this is the first...
I throw that out.
Yes, I think we're getting off topic.
Yeah.
So let me show you what I have here.
You're striking a little at home here. Having taught health and PE for 17 years, I love the fact that it's every day. All the studies that are out there, all the obesity, all the diabetes, all the health issues, things that as these generations get older is going to crush our economic system because healthcare is driving everything. I commend the fact that we have PE, and I wouldn't want to see a change. Maybe even a little bit more health, but I think of quarter, if it's every day, you can get all the topics in. So just to further our... I like the kids, the research that's out there for just getting the mind, getting the body moving and how much that helps the mind and how much better they're going to do on, in classes and academics. I'm also...
Thank you. So getting, getting back to, is there another question?
No.
No, okay. For teachers, the advantage is one period in the rotation can now be used for such things as common planning. That was the NIAS recommendation that... Any needs such as common curriculum alignment will have time to be scheduled and properly addressed. And then the other part is department chairs in this proposal would be teaching an additional course. Now, I don't know if that would involve any negotiating or anything like that, but if we had an eight-schedule period, right, that's something we'd have to kind of work out.
Can you implement this plan with the current teaching staff?
No. No.
So how many teachers have to be hired for it?
I'm estimating three. It's coming up here, you'll see it. So this is the proposal. So this is the proposal, you start out as a freshman, you set them up for success with the course that we proposed for the freshmen. And then we do some exploratory classes, we provide support throughout the exploration. Eventually, it'll funnel down into a pathway, and that could even be part of the senior project. What the senior project does right now is they actually go out, they get a mentor, they work with a mentor in a field that they're interested in and so forth. And many of them pursue that as they go on into college. So that's kind of where we're heading with that. Based on senior project data, these are the most popular pathways that we've had, that students have actually done projects on. Physical therapy, nursing, athletic training, video editing, computer programming, art, animal science, hairstyling, emergency personnel services, auto repair. These are the most popular ones that we've had. What costs would be associated with this change? This is your question. To successfully implement this proposal, three more elective teachers would be added, and the cost is approximately $64,000 per year, for a total investment of $192,000. But again, this vision must have input and support from all stakeholders, students, parents, teachers, school administration, school committee. I, it's a proposal at this point. I just want you to understand that what we're up against right now as far as getting kids electives, it would benefit kids from both ends. The high-performing kid that wants more electives, the low-performing kid that could use a little bit more time to get some work done during the school day. It would benefit both of them. I think you can see it a little bit better when you actually see the visual like that. So my last pitch here is just to please consider this important investment in our students.
Your timing isn't for this year.
No, it isn't, the proposal isn't for this year either. It's, what I'm trying to do is get input from everybody, kind of think it all through, and then my implementation program would actually start following the school year.
So what's your next step, Ross? Do you want to come back to us and at a certain time?
Digest it?
Yeah.
Talk among yourselves, give me some input. You know, I'm taking input from everybody. It's, it's, you know, it's our school. I'm trying to do what's best for students, hopefully that's what we're all trying to do here. And you can see what we're up against, you know? But I'm not trying to put a Band-Aid on anything, I'm trying to make, make the school work.
Maybe you need a drop-dead date. You know, I'm working backwards, so if you want to implement it, not next year, but the year after, if they drop-dead date, you would have to know.
I, well, I wouldn't have to know until the, till the budgeting process comes. Because it would be a budgeting issue at that point.
Okay.
But at least, at least you understand what we're up against at this point in the rationale behind it, that's all.
Jim, how many, how many high schools still have to stay at eight periods or seven periods?
Good question.
I, I could get that information, but I'm not sure exactly. I know Narragansett is on an eight-period schedule right now, but they're still on block, too.
Narragansett and Woodsmen are on eight periods on a block schedule still.
Does Lincoln?
No, Lincoln has a seven-period day.
Do they drop two?
They drop two.
Do you seven, but drop two?
Yeah, most high schools in the state are seven, drop one, or drop two. Almost everyone's using some version of a block schedule now.
You said that your, the committee that worked on this was made up of a lot of different people. By chance, have you pulled the high school staff to see what they as a whole feel about this? Or have you not gotten to that?
No, we have, I mean, we've discussed it with our school improvement team, with our leadership team, different faculties, students, parents. It's a direction that seems like it would work for us. When we had the eight-period block schedule, they had, they were able to work it back then, but the time didn't work out well for us because like in a math class, for example, that long period was tough for a math teacher, where like a culinary teacher would love that, you know what I mean? So if we stuck with the same 50-minute period, basically, I think if we keep everybody happy, we'd have to cycle those two days through. Where you lose it is on the number of minutes on the whole school year.
That was under my next one. So when you, when you look at the numbers as a whole, and I know you put numbers in here, but I was a little confused with...
Yep, so let me...
Plus 20, minus 10.
Yeah, let me show you something, yeah. How will this instruct, how will it affect instructional time?
Yes.
Currently, each class has 8,404 minutes of instruction per year.
That's a five-day week.
Yeah, 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 so, I'm, I'm, yeah.
It's the, it's the seven-day rotation.
If you went to the other one with an added period, each class would meet a total of 7,194 minutes. So you'd be, you'd be losing, was that about 1,000, close to 1,000 minutes total of instructional time? Over, over the course of 100.
The schools that do the eight-period drop two, don't they really do it for block scheduling purposes more than getting more electives in there? Because you, you're right, you're not going to get more electives unless you add staff. Because if, you know, if you have two teachers and by contract they only have to teach five periods a day, whether you have an eight-period schedule or a seven-period schedule, you're still only going to have 10 more classes.
Can be flexibility in this schedule to create pathways to allow kids to reach options they might not be able to reach otherwise.
But it, it in itself doesn't lead to more exploratories without hiring more teachers.
Right, what it does is it frees up time, though. Sometimes a kid may be available to take a class, but there's no teacher available to teach the class, you know what I mean? By throwing that one more into the mix, you're freeing up both ends. The teacher's schedule, and you're freeing up the kids' end as far as flexibility.
Jim, the last question I have is, on page eight of this handout, you're kind of suggesting that the art technology and business are the offerings that are suggested by the career path. But when I look at the career path choices, clusters, and you highlighted in red the ones that we would be able to offer, I don't see any of them being art.
Right, those are proposed pathways that we could offer. We actually looked those up from other schools, too, and see what they offered that are there. But it would be something of that nature, you'd have a pathway. The reason we selected business and tech ed is because we have the engineering program down there. We could, those have the more common electives. The business, the business part could be the criminal justice and all that. We run some of those classes through the business department.
No, I was just surprised we had art as number one, because it's not one that's in red that's an art course. They were all science, business, or technology courses. And in other words...
I think, I think the reason we had art in there, Mike, is because of the student interest. You know that slide that had the, with the students who were interested? So you're trying to do both, you're trying to, you're trying to set up the pathways, but you're also trying to make it so that you're accommodating the student interest, too. And that could change, too, you know what I mean? Like if, if we had students that were more interested in one area than another, which could be a different...
I think Jim had a question for you.
Just a quick question. How do we, is there a way of phasing this in so it's not an initial impact of $200,000? Does that make any sense?
I, I don't know that I can develop an eight-period schedule without three, three more staff. I think that's the issue. So I'm not sure that I can do an eight-period scenario with less than three people.
We start off at seven, plus the teacher and a half, and then go to eight?
I don't follow you.
I don't know if I follow myself, either, so... Why don't we just forget that question? I'm just looking to see if there's a way of more phasing it in some...
Yeah, so we've been banging our heads against the wall trying to figure it out, you know what I mean? We want the kids to have opportunities, and right now, they're kind of locked in. If you're in the music program, 60% of our kids are. If they go to college, they don't have much choice. That's, that's the whole gist of it right now, you know? They're taking, they're taking music and they're taking foreign language, and that pretty much determines where they're, where they're going, you know?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and here's, here's the comparison of different schools as far as minutes go. With the proposed schedule, we'd be at 7,494. Narragansett, 7,700, Narragansett, 68, so we'd still be doing more than Narragansett. Smithfield's at 81, Situate's at 79. So that's, that's a comp of what we're doing. Even if we went to this schedule here, we'd still be close as far as the number of instructional minutes with what other schools are doing right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just trying to move along with this.
Yeah, all right, I'm done. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one more, I know you're trying to pick one. Is your roadblock as far as implementing because of current contract or because of staff? In other words, do you have, like, could you do it with two additional staff members if language and the current contract was slightly different as far as how many classes teachers could teach, what's still offered them, the prep time to be able to prepare for class?
Yeah, I, I think, I think...
They need the prep to be able to prepare for classes that are different.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm not throwing work, work?
The proposal was for three because we thought that would be the proper number to make it all work out. We could look into it to see if two would do it, I don't know that it would, but I, you know, I think when we, we...
I know, we just have to be able to still have to roll along.
Yeah, when we discussed it, it looked like, it looked like three was going to be the number. We've had that many elective teachers in the past, but as they, me being one of them, I was an elective course teacher. When I took a job in administration, it was just gone, that position was gone. When Mr. Barnes moved on, that position was just gone, you know? We had a culinary teacher, when she left, it's just gone. Like, we had those electives in place at one point in time, and as these people leave for different reasons, we just don't fill them.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.